Monday, August 9, 2021, 6 o'clock. Susan probably lives the board in the 1887 building. Let's call the meetings ordered.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yep.
Mrs. Gray?
Yeah.
We'll note that Mr. Sparrow could not be with us this evening. But we do have a quorum. We will continue. I will note this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. I'm guessing we have community participation because we have a good audience tonight. I know Mr. Talley have a couple of things to read in. We'll do that first.
Yep, I have two emails that the individuals requested to have those on record. The first one is from Sarah Armbrath. And she says, "Good evening. I am emailing because I will not be able to make it to the board meeting this month." It is unfortunate because it falls on the same day as the late June, the high school board meeting. And I have to get that one. I'd like to go on record that I am really, all caps, hoping to have enough power shows for 42. It has been proven that children are not only not at risk for the COVID virus, but that they are not spreaders of this virus. My final and very important point is that we should not be keeping the COVID bodies to the required. If they need them, that's why I'm here. If it is decided to go mask required, and my child has an exemption from my doctor, how would that be handled in the middle school? Thank you. I look forward to hearing that. Second email I have received was from Jennifer Sharp. From the Dear School Board, when will parents be notified if they're not scheduled to wear masks for the 2021, 2022 school year? If masks will be required, will parents have the option to change their school enrollment prior to the school year? For both the personal hygiene and the COVID. Please introduce these questions from the Jennifer school. And regards, Jennifer Sharp.
I'm going to read this before we get started with the rest of you, and then whoever wants to speak can speak. Community participation is intended to provide for persons to address the board on any matter of concern. The board will hear the concern, and if appropriate, will direct the administration to respond. For matters dealing with personnel, it is suggested that concerned parties follow the established chain of command or chain of communication. If matters cannot be resolved, a closed session with the board may be requested in accordance with state statutes. So with that, we would like to go first. Don't want to jump off the ones, please.
This is like being in a classroom. Are we going to have to call on someone? I'll just speak.
Does anybody want to speak? If you don't want to speak, you don't have to.
I just want to speak on behalf of parents.
We just need, um...
Yeah, we just need you to say your name.
For the record, okay. For the record, I'm Megan Pata. And I have four kids that are in Elkhorn School, district high school to a middle, or from high school to a middle school. I just want to thank you guys. I know that this is a really tough climate to be in a position of making decisions. And when I look across either the country or even our county, or states, but the country as well, that a lot of kids haven't been in school. And I know you guys are fought really hard to keep our kids in school. And I just wanted to tell you guys that we appreciate that. I think that there's a lot of people that are here today that just want to understand how the decision process is made, how you guys go about that, what you take into consideration, that I don't want this to look like a threat of anyone asking questions or even assuming what we want to talk about. But just that we want to understand the process of how you guys go about making decisions, and what governing bodies, what, you know, professional opinions, you know, what you guys take as elected officials or parents, but just how you guys go about making that decision. And I think, you know, that I don't know that I can speak for everybody, but that we just want to understand the process of it, and we want to understand how you get to these conclusions. And we also want, you know, as parents, our kids are in the schools. And I think it's important for us to be involved because I know a lot of times these seats are empty. And it, you know, if I was sitting in there, I would think I would want people to understand how we get to draw the conclusions that we draw to. So I just want to say thank you guys for your service to the community because it's not a tough spot to be in. It's easy to criticize, but it's hard when you're making the decisions and looking out for everybody. But on behalf of the community, thank you.
State law does prevent us from discussing things as a board that aren't listed on the agenda. So we wouldn't be able to discuss like what our outlook is on this year. However, I will relate to Mr. Tadlock to go ahead and answer some of that.
Yeah, I think it allows for you to go ahead and answer a question. Last year, as we went, you know, this unprecedented, you know, event, we've been first, well, we always have hand down plans and so forth, but we, and we got close during the SARS time and happy to implement some things in the swine flu, but it didn't really hit our area like it did some other areas. And so it was very much an unprecedented time. And last year, as we went into the school year, and we put together the plan and the proposal and shared that with the school board at the time. And back in August of last year, the board authorized me at that point to work with local health officials, the county health department, and our medical advisor, our district nurse, and work with them to develop the mitigation strategies and move through those different mitigation strategies and apply them depending on what was happening within our community, within our district. So the board made that motion and approved that last August. So since then, I've been, you know, authorized, and I work with our team, the district nurse primarily, and she works with the, our medical advisor as well. And then we work closely with the county health department. And I feel very fortunate to be in Walworth County to work with our county health department because, you know, I think they've received some criticism too, but they've allowed us to do things that other counties did not allow their individual school districts to do. And they've been very supportive of us, to be frank, pushing the envelope on what we've been able to allow our kids to do. I don't think there's another high school in Wisconsin who, last August during that shutdown, was able to hold a conference. You know, and we were able to try to keep those types of events going. And we couldn't have done that in many of the other counties because their health providers just put that absolutely not. So we work very closely with all those individuals. Now, there's other factors that come into play. If there's a lawful order from a government body or entity that has authority to implement that, that order, then we have to follow it or we become liable under the law for disregarding a legal order that's in place as a release of public health concern. So, and that's something, so in addition to the help people, I also meet regularly with all the area superintendents, the superintendents in our conference, as well as the superintendents in Walworth County. I think that's why you saw a pretty uniform approach from Walworth County. And it was very helpful in getting us to that point where we were a lot more active, where our kids were in school face to face, where we weren't at home on Wednesdays, so to speak, or in school every other day because Delvin knew, well, Elkhorn's doing this. And if we don't do that, then there's going to be, you know, pressure on that other side. So there was a lot of, a lot more power in all of us working together. We continue to work together and have regularly scheduled meetings with them. I also, as part of my superintendent's organization, meet with all the superintendents around the state. It was kind of unprecedented, the number of meetings, the number of check-ins from DPI, from the Department of Health Services, from the state, and all these different levels. So it's taking in lots of information from all of those different groups, and then delineating it down, but really the nuts and bolts when we put our plan together, it's going through our local health department. Are you okay with this? Does this look like it's working? Are you okay with us, you know, holding this eighth grade moving on ceremony if we put these measures in place? Are you okay, when we went to the, removing the, making face coverings optional in May, I think only Elm Brook had done that at that point. But we had a meeting with the health department, and of course, they said, you know, that's not the guidelines. That's not what's coming out from the recommendations and from the Department of Health Services from the state. So we're not really in a position where, you know, we can say, yeah, that's a great idea. But because the infection rates are low and your plan is in place, and you have a strategy to handle it if numbers spike, we'll support you in that and go ahead and do it. So they gave us that freedom. Now, if the health department came back at some point and said, no, you absolutely can't do that, they would have that authority to handle a pandemic or those outbreaks or anything along those lines. But our health department, even at the height in November, I would say that was, that was the one time where had we not gone to virtual for those that week to let it cool off, where after the fact, you know, it was communicated that, hey, you know, we were going to let you do that, do that. But we had done it on our own. They were supportive of that. And our medical advisor as well felt that way. So their big concern in the process along is, how are we handling it? Are there outbreaks in the school and so forth, and what does that look like? I know it's, I'm giving a very lengthy answer because there's a lot that goes into it, but it's a communication with a lot of different people, come up with the best possible plans. But also, I have an obligation to not put the district in a situation where they're going to be legally liable. And I'd say that's not a black and white line, other than if you violate a lawful order. The insurance companies and our legal advisors have been very clear that, you know, for example, governors, owners have the order in place on the face coverings. If we just disregarded that, anyone who got sick, they could have gone and stood a saying. You knew that there was a known danger, you didn't follow it. We contracted it on school and could have stood. And insurance companies also communicate, while you may be covered because you have a policy this year, that you're not going to get your coverage changed. That's just something that we can't put the district in that position. But right now, there isn't, there are no lawful orders in place. Our status hasn't changed since May. We went, you know, May without having a spike in the cases in school. We went all summer school without having any outbreaks in the school. It is a little concerning that the COVID numbers in the county are starting to tick upward. I think we're at eighty active cases today, which is a little higher than it was last August at this timeframe, as we started the school year. But we also have, you know, a little over 50% of our school district population vaccinated. And that's total population. So that includes kids who aren't eligible to be vaccinated. So it's my hope that as we move into the school year, I haven't seen anyone who says like, I love wearing the face cover. Really? I mean, I, nobody likes it. I dislike it just as much as anyone else. My little kid, JJ, you know, hates it now. He been, all year he's been bugging with face, but as soon as he got to take it off. And we were in that phase where like, well, you probably should still wear it going into the store because you're not vaccinated. And I wasn't, this is no offense, I respect the parents who, well, even though I'm vaccinated, I'm still going to wear it as a role model for my kids. I'm not dissing that, but like, no, I'm vaccinated. I'm, it's off, and sorry, kid, you're not, put your mask on. And, you know, it was really, he didn't like that at all. He was like, you know, I have another kid who doesn't face it. But I, I know that people don't like those, and we don't like them, and the vast majority don't. So my hope and our plan is to continue in that fashion. I know the, talking to the other superintendents in Walworth County, that's where everyone's at. From a timeline, we have meeting with the health department towards the end of the month again. I don't anticipate any changes or the county coming forward with any mandates on that up to this point, knock on wood. Last I checked in, that there wasn't any Delta variant identified. But it's probably, I'm guessing they're only testing people in hospital. So it's my hope we don't run hot like that from down south. But it may be inevitable, and we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there. But from a default position, we'd like to use as few mitigation strategies as we possibly can, keeping the staff and the students safe. And that's one of our biggest concerns is when we went to have to, had to shut down in November, is having enough adult bodies in the building to run the classes and keep everybody at school. We're also working with the county on the quarantine procedures. The, last year, we had hundreds of individuals that were quarantined within the school setting. We only had one instance of a quarantined individual from a school exposure testing positive for COVID. So I think that demonstrates the air circulation that was being used and being ramped up. The other mitigation strategies that we were doing wasn't resulting in kids exposing and transferring to disease in the school setting at a very high rate. Now, if we roll into the school year and, you know, obviously not having the face coverings, and then we start seeing all this elementary class, one kid came in with COVID, and then five others got it, and none of their parents were sick, that was clear where they got it. Then we may have to go back and reevaluate because we know it worked last year because we didn't have transference in the school. And, you know, that may be something, if we start having outbreaks, I don't want school buildings getting shut down. We don't want kids out of school. We want them in school. So that is the top priority, keep them in face to face. And that school building will work with the health officials in the department to use as little mitigation strategies as we can to keep them there. And the way the health department described it, I really like this. They said, "We're shifting from a pandemic to handling it more like a pandemic." And as I described that to our admin team, it's going from being preventative to more responsive. So we have some levels of prevention there, but it's going to be more of a responsive type scenario if we see that transference or the spread within the school. But the biggest help that we can have in the community, and my biggest frustration point were just, you know, parents being honest with themselves and their kids about when their kids sick and not sending them to school so we don't have to expose other kids. Because that was my biggest frustration. And, and I get it, you don't have daycare lined up, you want them to be in school, you don't want them to miss that. But just, you know, when the kids are something, I just, we just need them to be home. And we'll have some, hopefully, we're, we're working on a process that, I hope the health department will be okay with the shortening, shortening the quarantine period or modifying that. Because I felt that there's a lot of people that quarantined for a lengthy amount of time that in retrospect probably didn't need to, based on the fact that none of them got sick. People that got exposed at home got sick in a very heavy way. So that's where we need more of that cooperation, that, look, if you were sick on the Wednesday, mom, and you went in, you got tested for COVID, and we told you, how many times in my updates did I say, do not send your kids to school while you're waiting for the COVID test? I mean, just about every message. And we still have people all the time. Oh, I'm sure I didn't have COVID. Boom, test comes back with COVID, the kid gets sick, then we have to quarantine. I appreciate your comments, and I don't know, does that answer kind of the question on the process? It's not a, I don't want to say a perfect science because it does ebb and flow. It's a little bit fluid, but our default that we want is this normal experience for our kids to respond.
I, yes, I think there's a few things that like, you know, as you're speaking, I'm like, well, I would like to ask a question on that. And as through the whole conversation, I don't know exactly what that is, but you also have been very accessible to people, and I think that that's been really helpful for the community as well. In every email, in every correspondence, you never shy away from asking people to call you. And I think that that has been helpful. So anyways, thanks for doing that too, because, I don't know, I know I called.
Well, feel free to give me a call anytime or stop in and we would usually schedule me. She would schedule me with the group, and I'm happy to just answer any questions that she had too. But I know overwhelmingly, our community, yeah, they want that option to choose whether we're in the face coverings or not. And I do too, and I hope we can maintain that for the future.
And I hope that like even our local governing bodies, like I know the Walworth County even takes more precedent than maybe even what's going on at the national level. Because we aren't, I mean, we do get to be a small rural community. And so I, you know, taking more into account what, you know, what they would say versus, you know, because we shouldn't have treated it the same way as, you know, a large metropolitan city is treated.
Yeah, so, and I'll, I'll share the, that's what I loved about our health department, the leadership there. We did not follow the Wisconsin model for mitigation or even the numbers that they consider to be at a high or high risk level. Because they felt that the Wisconsin Department of Health Services adopted, I believe it was Massachusetts model, which was more urban. They adopted, they followed along the lines of Minnesota's model. So our local, you know, Walworth County, for that very reason, they recognized, we're not an urban county. We're more rural, and Minnesota's model fits more hard in the graphics in our population. So they, that's where we got a lot more leeway, is they didn't follow our state department of health guidelines. Or they, they, they were pragmatic and looked at another model that was worked out. Which I very much appreciated because there are a lot of kids who lost a lot of opportunities last year because of county health. Move forward.
And I'm just saying, Megan, we've seen each other in the grocery store, and I end up talking to people. Grocery shopping takes me one pair. I'm willing to talk to people as long as I'm feeling okay, you know, when I'm done. But so I think all of us here are successful, one way or another, to reach out to them.
Well, we can't really, like I said, we can't really talk about like what we're going to do or because of state law, it just bothers us from doing that because it has to be noted on an agenda. And then we have, you know, gives notice to you saying that, hey, we're going to discuss this tonight. So it gives you the opportunity to comment on this and what we're going to say. You know, obviously, that's what the goal of the law was. It wasn't really like, put a, you know, muffle on us or something, you know, that we can't say that. But at the same time, we can't really break it. I think, you know, one of the things, Mr. Tadlock's comments about, you know, I, I can't speak for everyone here, but I can speak for myself. And I think I know what everyone else thinks in the same token, which is that we want our kids in school. We all do. We all, you know, some of us have children that, I have a daughter that's in school. I want her in school. I don't like her wearing face coverings either, but, you know, these decisions are pretty hard, as you said. I mean, they're not, from the standpoint, from our standpoint, it's difficult to sit here and say something, you know, just come up with something. But we have to do it, so we make those calls. But all of us want the least amount of mitigation, like you said, the most, the least amount of mitigation where our kids are still safe and hopefully our community is safe. That's all we're, we're after. And we're not after laying down mandates or making people do things that they don't want to do. That's not why we're here. So I don't want anybody to think that. And I'm not saying that you do think that. I'm just, I'm just stating an opinion that I, I definitely don't want the community thinking that we're sitting here and we just want to lay down these like edicts towards people. We're not, we're not doing that. We're just trying to keep our kids safe. We all, you know, I have a daughter, Jenny has kids in the school district, Kevin has kids in the school district, Daisy has kids in the school district. We're trying to keep them safe. We're trying to keep our families safe. That's, that's really all there is to it.
And this is really, I feel like even just getting people in here is really meant to be a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. And I hope that that's how you guys see it as well, that we, you know, we want to understand how these decisions are.
We want people to, we want people to comment. We want people to, to, you know, because sometimes we sit here and there's nobody here, and I think, you know, anybody...
They're all online. Why is watching a mom on, and some of them didn't have time?
Our microphone's broken. Yeah, they do break. Supposedly fixed today. I can see the little varm.
And we never know that because we don't really watch them after we do it.
My mom got sick, and she must have quit watching.
All right, first I don't.
She would be like, you know, you're like that.
But is there anybody else that wants to speak before, because we do have to wrap up at some point. I don't know if anybody else wants to.
I'd like to say one thing.
Say your name.
Mark Beilman, I have one son in the district, and I also have one son over in Williams Bay. Megan, thank you for your comments. Spot on. You guys do a wonderful job. I think last year, and you continue to do a wonderful job. Jason, I'm glad you brought up the quarantine. I know Williams Bay said some very concerning things at a meeting last week about the contact tracing and the quarantine. If you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine at all. And if you're unvaccinated, you have to quarantine for 14 days. Very, very concerning to the parents that were there. So much as some called the health department because the administrator there told us that his hands were tied and that he is getting his information directly from the health department. Called the health department, they're saying that they're not really giving that guidance to Williams Bay. It's strictly up to Williams Bay. And that there is a little bit of leeway that you had talked about. They, they, you know, 10 days, could be, could be 10 days. So I just, the parents that I have talked to, and I know, I'm pretty sure that everybody here is, is concerned about that, the, you know, the contact tracing, the quarantining. And I'm glad you brought it up, but that is a huge issue. I know everybody's worried about the masks right now, but keeping these kids at school is number one. And I think that quarantine. And absolutely, that was, that...
They don't need any more mental.
That was brought up several times. Thank you for bringing that. Because health decisions are supposed to be private. And, you know, you know, if you have a student that quarantines for two weeks and one that doesn't, the privacy really goes out the window with, with the vaccination status.
So I can speak to that and go a little bit more in depth on what we're looking at. So the, in, in the history of this, so halfway through the year, it was probably around January off the top of my head, and I was ecstatic when the CDC came out with that. And they said, oh, we can move the quarantine window. They actually said seven to 10 days for a short period. And I, we said, probably, let's do it. Let's go down to seven days. And I'm sorry, I shouldn't laugh about it, but right away, bam, three people got sick who were in quarantine. We released to come back on day eight and nine, or, oh crap, or seven days doesn't work. So we went to 10, and we've maintained 10 days since then. Which they still, if you go back and more recent on their guidance, like, ah, 10 days might not be long enough. It's all actuarial studies, basically, is what they're doing. They're saying, they know there's a certain percentage who after an exposure will develop it after 10, but it's a minute percentage. So, you know, we went to 10, and we stuck with that, and 10 really worked. Seven didn't work. We saw that right away. But what we'd like to do though is, at that time, we didn't have testing. Rapid testing wasn't available. You'd have to, some people would be waiting a week for testing. We have the capacity now, and, and what we'd share, and this gets in a whole other can of worms because I know there's some parents like, well, you know, you're not testing my kid. Well, so be it. But what I'd like to do is, what we'd like to do is, we're more comfortable going to, and we'll share and have to run this by the health department, to go to more of a monitoring type process where parents will be notified, your student was exposed at school. And, you know, we're going to do a monitoring rather than a quarantine. And we could also utilize, and our proposal that we'd want to run through the health officials is, if, can we do that in lieu of just quarantining for 10 days if we incorporate the rapid tests, which we have the capacity to do? It's simple. I just bought one from Walgreens because my kid had a cold the other day and testing them at home. It's, you know, they're simple, they're there, we have thousands of them to do that. But the goal would be again, getting kids in school. The vaccination piece, that comes from the guidance where the CDC and the health department, their guidance basically said, look, there's no need to quarantine the individuals if they have a vaccine. I think there's some confusion on some of the HIPAA or some of those aspects with vaccinations because we have laws that are in place already that if our vaccination rates on rapid vacs, vaccinations drop below a certain percentage, we send, we have to send letters home to those parents who aren't up to date on their vaccinations that, you know, we found B law, I believe it's the 95% of the kids being vaccinated. And therefore, your kid, if not vaccinated by this date or up to date, but no longer until school, until the percentage is back up above 95%. That's been in place as long as, I think, all of us in here, probably in students and in going to school. Any vaccine that gets administered, including the COVID-19, goes into the state vaccination database. Our school nurse, the district nurse has access to it. You don't even have to have. We can just pull up online, is this person vaccinated or not? So the intent of that was to not have to quarantine individuals. And it's really not that significantly different than the other childhood vaccinations. At some point, I'm sure, maybe years down the road, but it wouldn't surprise me that the COVID vaccine just becomes part of that childhood vaccination database. But that's probably years down the road after the approval, after whatever it has to go through. It wouldn't surprise me if at some point it becomes one of those like the measles or the... Now, and people still bypass the vaccine. Absolutely, it's their choice. They can do it because, you know, for religious reasons, just for conscientious objections. bypass the vaccine. Absolutely, it's their choice. They can do it because, you know, for religious reasons, just for conscientious objections. But that doesn't mean that there's not consequences in some cases to that. If there's a measles outbreak and, you know, there's measles even within a community area and the kid's not vaccinated for measles, they can't. You know, there's choices and consequences with that. Everybody has that right, but there's factors to it. So I don't know how that would handle. We don't wanna get into that, to be, right? Into that whole aspect of it, but that's just where it, it comes from. It's because the health officials in the guidance said, you don't have to quarantine. So will they go as far to say, well, you don't have to quarantine anyone? I don't know, but I don't wanna punish somebody if they have access to it nursing, we don't need to quarantine because they've been vaccinated. Just because we don't want an imbalance between that. When in reality, we already have that in childhood vaccination. And it happens, I don't wanna say every year, but when that vaccination rate drops, those letters go out and some of those families, they have to respond that they have to. Does that answer what I was? So I don't have a lot of date, details on that and the quarantine piece, and that's something that we're working on right now, but you know, we'll run through the health department. And again, it's, it's more so just to get the blessing as opposed to the, and do you think this is sound? Do you think this is a wise idea? As opposed to opening ourselves up to potential risk of the health department saying, this is, we would never approve. Does that make sense for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry. Can I just say something? Hi, I'm Jennifer Sharp and I'm one that sent the questions. I have two children in open school district. And I, I know you're going to need to go on the rest of your agenda, but, and you guys all have kids in the school district as well and, and we can talk all like statistics, health department, and it can get very adult conversation. Okay. So I'm just asking, please keep the kids in your conversation when you're making these decisions with the health department. It's pretty scary when you're still reading, you know, the CDC website and they're, you know, what they're recommending for this school year. And I understand by being here that you guys are working with our health department differently than what the nation is recommending or whatever, but you know, one of the reasons probably so many of us are here is we're already getting questions from our kids. What are we gonna, are we gonna have to do this again? You know, you know, little kids, six and nine years old, mine are, and they're already dreading, what's the school you're gonna look like, mom? Are we gonna have to do this again? There is no way. I don't wanna go to school if we have to do this again. You know, and so we, we as parents can understand a little bit better now how you guys are making these decisions and trying to, you know, have a minimum amount of strategies in place. But I think it does really come down to our kids' mental health as well and their experience in school and friendships and even with their teachers, being able to see their teachers faces. I mean, unfortunately, last year, I didn't get to volunteer at all. I never even met my child teacher except on a phone call and he was an absolutely amazing teacher. I thanked him as best as I could. And the type of parent that normally would be volunteering in this school, there was never an open house, no music concerts, no, you know, and we understand all that, but and I know you guys want it to get back to normal too, but we're just like, when you're making the decisions, yeah, take a step back and say, how would a seven-year-old feel about this? How would a nine-year-old, how's my teenager? How are the high school kids? You know, just their kind of how they're feeling about it and then, yeah, because I'm already, you know, there are, they know school's starting in a month and we're already getting the questions of, and I, that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. It's like, do I need to make a different enrollment decision for them? And I guess if the mask thing would have to be put in for a time, it's like give the kids, and I know you don't have a magic wand to say how long it would be for, but like if it starts and they don't get any explanation of, look, this may only be for three weeks or a month, you know, rather than, look, this is gonna be until the end of the year. You're gonna have kids just losing it. Yeah. So I'm sorry.
I absolutely agree. And the responsive model would be if we had, you know, a class or a school where there was an outbreak that perhaps there might need to be some face covering for a week to get through that potential exposure period and then go away with it. I would not, that was so, it was extremely frustrating, especially when the infection rates got low, that we still had to have the face covering zone, that we were still in that position. And then when the vaccinations came, that we still were in that position where having the face coverings. And that's why as soon as I felt when the CDC came out and said, hey, if you got vaccinations, and I, I learned that much quicker than any of the other schools. They're like, why are you doing that now? I said, cause they had the choice. They got vaccinated. It's, the infection rates are all, we're getting, getting real. I wanted the kids to finish the year on a positive note and not have to deal with that.
And it could be a big difference for them going into the summer, knowing that.
And that's why I wanted to do that and will continue that. I don't think we'll ever see, knock on wood, the situation where everybody has to wear face covering for a certain amount of time. That's, I, I don't disagree with any of yous.
And so, sorry, so, and I'm not as versed in, I guess, the powers that Governor Tony Evers still has in the state since the Supreme Court overruled that last March, but will he still be able to make some sort of mandate that you're gonna need to? Like, I don't know where his authority is at the moment, like how that stands, or are you able to just work with our county health department?
Right now, I can just work with the county health. I think the federal government and/or the state government, I don't think Governor Evers would have the, I don't know what he has from the executive board's standpoint. But the federal government, I could see, they can use a carrot or a stick is how, is how you look at it. They don't really have authority over the schools at all. The schools are state run, but they have federal money. And so they can say, you either do this or you don't get this. And so then it's a big budgetary impact. I'm surprised to be frank, and that's where I kind of feel like, but if they really feel that strongly on something, they could say, you can have S R three funds, but you have to do these mitigations. And agree to it. And if not, you don't get the money. It would be second, but they haven't done that. So, and I don't anticipate. But if they got really bad with the Delta variant or something, hypothetically, could they? They could. And they would be in that sort of position now. Or either turn down, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever it needs to be strict, but I, I don't think they have any desire to do that. But I think we'll be able to stay local and work with our local officials.
I kind of your point. I'm Deirdre of Mango London and I have two kids in there too. And I think a lot, and that's what I was, I mean, you said it like perfectly with the mental health. I do know that I feel very strongly that near school, they should be getting taught, they should be getting taught. And I felt like last year, it was like a constant. Like my son was on home, oh yeah, this teacher was begging me, yelling at me about our masks, yelling about our masks. And it was like the whole year. I was wondering if you're learning anything? Like, it's just all about that. And then a couple of them have made comments on vaccines and things. I don't want that. And I, I actually put in my registration that on my health thing, not to talk to my kids about the vaccine and not to push that. I think the more we can keep that out and let them have, it will be more normal. That's all they want. And they wanna be kids and they wanna learn. And they don't need a teacher telling them that, oh, you don't have the vaccine or you should get it. I don't, we don't need any of that in the classroom. Yeah. And it's just for anything, well, they see, and they see all that stuff from the mental health thing, nobody was getting sick. Nobody, I mean, I'm not trying to make it all political here about the masks and how they do and don't work and all that, like, when you're trying to tell these kids, I mean, that's one of the things, I love asking these kids questions because they're honest with you and they can see everything. And you're telling them to wear a thing, not you personally, just the world. And they're looking around and they'll be sick and, and the kids are getting sick and they all want to quarantine. And one person in the quarantine, you know, they see these and then we're having to try to explain this and then it's, they're not even learning. We're fighting about this the whole time. So I just hope, I hope, I'm just hoping that this year we can just concentrate on what needs to be concentrated on and let those other things go to the side as much as we can.
Joanna Wilson, I have three kids now, in this district. Um, are we gonna be able to go back into the school? Cause I felt blind. It was not okay. Like, that's why I'm here today. You can't stop me from coming in here. Like they were stopping me. I couldn't even go in to give my kids donuts for their birthday. That was ridiculous. I volunteer all the time. I read kids books in school and it's being blind when I'm setting, am I trusting that today with you guys is not, not gonna be tolerated. But I mean, we tried this one year. We've lived with sicknesses thousands of years. And you're gonna keep us out of there. But I just, am I gonna be able to go back into school and volunteer again?
Perhaps depending on these vaccine rates and, you know, where it's at. To be, yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps. So just being honest on that and where it's at, are there times where you may not do what you hope that you can? Absolutely. Do we love volunteers? Absolutely. So I mean, that's certainly our goal.
One more thing. So like a couple of years ago before COVID even was a thing, like when I would get sick, I would try and keep my kids home because I didn't know if they got it. I didn't want them starting, I just don't, nobody wants to get sick even before COVID. But my kids, I actually had to go in and have a talk with them because they're like, we don't count you being sick and not be able to be there and stuff for them. Is that gonna be the same? Like you have like 10 days of sick days for school? Is that still?
Wait, 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 yeah. No, you're on topic. No, you're on topic. I had another thought that is something I know that was in part what you were speaking to.
I would like to see that if you have a teacher who is discussing something, let's say vaccines with the children or not, talk to that teacher. If you feel you haven't gotten what you needed from them, then go in your supervisor's room, you just prepare the, the personal at school. And then follow up because you can talk about it a year later, but it's hard for us to do anything. I will bother to come up here.
And I have done it. I did a couple of questions. I did. Yeah. I pulled my son out of one thing that they were doing and I've done those kinds of things. I just wanna, I'm hoping it's like a, like, I don't know if you guys make those kinds of policies, but I'm assuming you don't like.
No, but we, we want, we want the parents to, to, to come forward, whether it's this issue or it's other issues, but yes, we do want.
My name's Chris here. This is my wife Kim. We have a couple of kids in the district. That point, I just, what is the policy? I don't want my kids being told that they need to get vaccinated. I don't want, and the teachers, like your point, they, they should teach.
Teachers should be agnostic on that.
Yeah, I agree.
And if there's some, they don't have access to, there's only one person in the district that can look up vaccination. You know, what vaccinations they have or not have. The district nurse, you can look that up. The health aides, when they're doing that larger child finer, the youth vaccination piece, which COVID is not a part of. You know, the health aides may assist in that or the principals would be aware, but the teachers, it's not listed in the file or it's not listed in there or anything like that, unless there's a medical note that's placed in, in there that, that would be the parent asking for that. But teachers should remain agnostic on that and that subject. And I think the communication piece, if you're feeling that they're not, reach out and talk to the teacher first. And if that conversation, see how that goes. Well, if you're not satisfied, talk to the principal. If you're not satisfied about it, talk to me. And then if not satisfied with my handling, then come and request talk to the board.
Can I make a comment on that? I'm Kristen Holmestall. I have four kids in the district, a middle schooler and three in Tennessee. And what happened to my son last year was someone worked that and it was a substitute teacher and Principal McDermott actually backed up the teacher when I emailed him. So I would like to reiterate that if that is the policy, the agnostic policy, that that needs to be reiterated to everyone. Cause he made a comment about it being an educational environment and part of the discussion. My response was, my child is 12 and does not and should not make his own medical decisions, period. So if you're having a discussion with somebody about the vaccine, that's not even the right person to talk to. It's me. It's me. I make his medical decisions. That being said, my only other comment is that it's unfortunate that all of this is having to be discussed by those of you who are supposed to be educating my child. It is my job to keep my children safe. And it is your job to educate them in a safe environment, but their priority should be education. And this is all very unfortunate to me and I'm like hoping and praying that we can move beyond all of this so that we can get back to educating my kids because frankly, last year, educationally, as she mentioned, was kind of a crapshoot. And in hindsight, I do have one kid that I kept in school because I loved the teacher, but in hindsight, I should have home schooled him. He struggled the entire year mentally. And I don't think he progressed academically the way that he should have. And it wasn't just the masks. I think it was everything. I think everyone can agree we should keep the hand washing. Dear God, keep the hand washing. But like the distancing, some of the like, where he felt ostracized or away from other kids, like every kid is different. Some of my kids were fine and he was not. And, and so, you know, that being said, like, let's focus on education and kind of like try to get on with it. What? Yelled at. Yes. And actually I had a conversation with Mr. McDermott at the middle school about that too. And he actually backed me up on that one. Because I have good kids and they felt like they were being yelled at all the day, all day long. And that was like caused anxiety for them because they weren't used to that. Like they weren't used to being corrected all day. But that actually got better pretty quick by counter a few conversations. But that being said, thank for all the good work now, please.
Mental health is just as important.
Absolutely. It's a top priority. Just one more. I remembered my thought that I had that I wanted to share in the tweet. Move on from the time you said, but I appreciate all of your perspectives and where you're coming from on that. I also received communications from families. So this is the, the needle that I have to thread, who are petrified, who have lost family members. I know someone made the comment, you know, that nobody's really died. But the reality is we have students, we have parents who, they have lost loved ones. They are petrified. They are medically compromised. And, you know, I myself, you know, have a brother who's medically compromised and the vaccine, cause he's a kidney recipient. He, he can't build the antibodies despite his choice. So he has to take that into consideration everywhere he goes. I know that when I made the decision to remove the face coverings, that a family that we're very close to and consider as friends, because they have someone medically fragile, I'm sure they'll never speak to me again. I knew that when I had to go and make that sort of decision. So I appreciate where all of you are coming from as well, but I also do have to balance that factor with all families, all kids. And I know just as well as we have many kids, and I think it's the majority, because we saw how quick when face coverings were optional, that they all came off. But at the same time, we also do have those from a mental health standpoint. You see them when you drive around town where they're petrified and they have the face covering on in the car with their, their pants, for whatever reason. And, and you see that. And we serve those kids and those families as well. And I have to do our best to try to strike a, a balance, even though the majority is sitting in, you know, I think York camp and the wanting that choice. And, and the, the mental health is so important. So I appreciate you all coming and sharing your thoughts like this. And again, my, just pulled up on the emails. You got my cell phone number. It's there. You need to me a call. In the meantime, I have to discuss it or sit down and answer any other questions. And then after we meet with the, the health department, we'll send out the updates for, for the year. But I don't anticipate it being significantly different from the end of last school year or summer where it was pretty, getting back to normal. All right. We'll move on to approval of the school board minutes from last meeting, July 26th. And there's a new motion to approve it.
I move to approve the minutes of the July 26th, 2021, regular school board meeting as.
I move to approve the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, regular school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving second into approve the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, regular sessions for board meetings presented. Local vote, please. Mrs. Fisher? Uh, Mr. Gayheart? Mr. Martel? Phil Donald? Mrs. Ray?
The, uh, general other fund bills this evening cover check number one forty-three, five ninety-four to one forty-three, six ninety. Wire number six seventy-three, six eighty-two, ACH check number oh two zero, oh three four. Envoyed a check number one forty-three, five oh eight, combined amount of six hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. There's a memo providing some additional information about the bills in your board packet.
Questions, Mr. Trump?
I have one that's not specific to anyone's bill particularly, but more of a general question. When we have, um, subcontractors come in and do work, like roofing or electric or whatever it is, um, is there ever consistency in who we hire to do, like, safer electrical work? Cause I, I often see different people doing different work in different areas.
No, it's a great question. It, it kind of depends on the scope. If it's, if it's minor, like adding some electrical outlets or doing some minor plumbing repair.
Yeah.
We have a couple of local contractors who tend to work with bills.
Okay.
If it's a larger project, then we'll go out and get actual codes from licensed contractors.
Okay.
So, a lot of the things that we'll have, like on our maintenance plan, those would be typically dealt with.
Okay, so my HPA C, we're gonna be more consistent because it's a maintenance plan. Okay, got it. Okay, thanks.
Other questions, Mr. Trump? Hearing none. For motion.
I move to approve the general other fund bills of August ninth, twenty twenty-one, check numbers one four three, five nine four to one four three, six nine zero. Wire number six seven three to six eight two, ACH check number zero two zero, zero three four. Envoyed a check number one forty-three, five oh eight, in a combined amount of six hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents as presented.
Is there a second? So, moving to second into approve the general other fund bills of August ninth, twenty twenty-one, check numbers one four three, five nine four to one four three, six nine zero, wire number six seven three to six eight two, ACH check number zero two zero, zero three four. Envoyed a check number one four three, five zero eight, in a combined amount of six hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents as presented. Local vote, please. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Phil Donald?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Resolution for our cash flow. Here's the school board, as we consider, uh, doing our cash flow borrowing, um, to meet our, our immediate cash needs as a school district. It has to do with the timing of when we get our state money, our state aids, our property tax money in relation to our expenses. Um, and, and most districts have some type of cash flow borrowing. We used to have to do a, a borrowing for the entire year. Now, I think it's probably eight years ago, we've been able to do more of a line of credit. Um, we work at a local bank, ABF, ADV, which used to be People's Bank. Um, has put together a proposal again for, uh, doing a, a line of credit up to two million dollars. They, they base it on the cost, the prime variable rate. Last year, I think we ended up using that about twenty, twenty-six days. So, our cost for that is pretty reasonable compared to what we used to have to do when we borrow for the entire year. So, um, just kind of looking at continuing that arrangement. It would be dated September second, two thousand twenty-one and then maturing on August thirty-first. Um, I put together a sheet that kind of showed the history and then if you click on sheet two, it kind of shows the cash flow when we actually borrow that money. And, um, a lot of our state aids come at the end of June, so you still large deposit at that point. Fortunately, where we need the money is actually in December and January and November, but this is the way the state aids work, so.
Move, move around some of the state aids.
Prime's up to three point two five?
Yeah.
And we, we brought that up with the state legislators about, hey, could you change when you give us the revenue? And they basically said, well, then the state would have to buy them. So...
And, and we could request it, but we have to pay the state for the lost interest that they made.
Right.
Yeah. So, that was kind of not school districts that are doing their, it's like a payday home basis.
Right. I know. I know. It's like three weeks.
And, and the way the open enrollment component works, we don't see those monies until the end of June.
Right.
So, for our district, that's a large chunk that, you know, we're providing all those services. We don't see the money till the end of June. So, I think for some districts, they'd probably like that because if they're on the other end of the open enrollment.
Then it's not going out as good as, with us coming in.
What was our prime last year?
It started at that same rate and then it does fluctuate. So, um, it can change. And I think on the sheet one, I think our interest cost last year is about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. With the chef, I know this is our being last year as well.
We, we've got a relationship with them and we just kind of continue with that?
I don't think it's changed since I've been aboard, but...
You know, if we had to go out and actual borrow for the entire year, we would definitely go into market.
We kind of do the same thing with CCA, we have a fee that we have a partnership with and it's a short term like this.
And they're writing application fees and...
Right.
Other questions, Mr. Trump? None. I'm looking for motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing a taxable... That's correct. Okay, taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed two million dollars as presented.
Is there a second? As we move to second into approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes not to exceed two million dollars as presented. Local vote, please. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Donald? Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Thank you, Julia. I started reading it. I'm going, am I reading it right? So, I start, yeah, we get to the way it's written, so.
Your governmental agreement with Williams Bay. I'll turn it over to Tricia Finney, our director of running online...
Asking permission to enter into the sixty-six oh three oh one agreement with Williams Bay School District for this year. I think it was included in.
Same agreement as last year, yeah. Just changed the dates.
Is there anything?
Yeah.
Oh, we added, um, in seven, number seven two, we added language to clarify who pays for any Star College Now or any college credit.
Oh, yeah. Good idea.
So, those, the partnering school district would pay for those with, and their district administrator asked for his approval first. Did you pay last year? We didn't have any students that took classes, so it was just a good, you know, reminder that you could in the future.
Right.
We, we did through CCA though, because there are partner districts from CCA.
Right.
And so, that was kind of, you wanted to have a little better handle on approving those classes.
For everything tuition, book, everything will be covered by, by Williams Bay.
So, I noticed we took off the dollar amount, fifty percent because that...
It could, yeah, that was last year's amount. We thought it was just cleaner to put fifty percent.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we running into any extra calls? No, 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 it was pretty simple last year. And I, I had a call from a school district today for a potential agreement with them, or for this year too. They're coming back for another approval.
Oh. So, I'm curious, is Williams Bay advertising it to their students? Like, how is the word getting out for that to grow? Or do they not want it to grow?
I'm not sure. How is there...
I think they just make it about, if they have a family that says, we want to be virtual only, then they refer them to options.
But then to get into like the Star College Now through...
Oh, no, I'm sure they're not...
It needs to be able to like, know when the application is that you're homeschool versus...
Right. I've got two in it and it's hard. We, well, we will, for that agreement, we will handle all the applications and we will invoice Williams Bay for the classroom classes.
Okay.
You're right. Yeah, it is very confusing.
Um, application design for the resident school. Right. And depending on what school they want to go to.
How many students, I'm going to say, do we have in the whole?
Uh, right now, one.
Okay. So... And how many do we have last year?
I'm sure we had, we invoiced, maybe it was eight.
Yeah, I was going to say eight to ten.
Yeah.
We, we had, um, a different arrangement with their elementary virtual school. Where we just provided them with curriculum. They provided the teachers, so it wasn't part of the supplement. But this year, we will provide the teacher for elementary too.
Those students will be coming into our campus. I don't have options. I mean, you have a lot of days now, which will be open again.
Right.
My question in here too is, we talked about, you know, ending the semester. Are, are we on semesters opposed to the virtual as opposed to trimester that we have here? I think that's a problem. So, is this language going back to...
This language, well, this language reflects Williams Bay. They're on semesters as well, for, for that.
All right.
We're on trimesters.
Oh.
But as far as the billing, how?
That is semester.
Okay.
Any questions?
And they're taking it to their board. So, once that, well, yeah, once both parties have, then it's set to DPI. Thank you.
I know, no more questions. I put for motion.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement.
Sure, second. So, moving to second into approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Williams Bay School District. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Donald?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ray? Uh, sufficient restraint report.
I wish my stuff was more glamorous. Right. So, I'm sure you guys remember Rita giving us this in the past, but ever since Act one eighteen come out, you know, um, school districts are required to report on the number of seclusion or restraint they have. Um, so, school districts need to keep data on that. Obviously, it's always used as a last resort to keep students safe. Um, but these are our numbers from last year. Um, they are down considerably, which as a new director to Elkhorn, I was quite happy to see.
I was gonna ask.
Um, yeah, the last...
I was gonna have to dig into it.
Yep. So, I, right away when I looked, you know, it's like, I wonder what they were in the past. And I'm like, you know, um, so last year it was one fifty-four and it's down to fifty.
Wow.
And then for restraint, it was one sixty-three. So, that was reassuring for me to see, you know, coming in.
Student number changing? The student number is down, it's gonna be high, but it's multiple ones against students.
So, last year was sixteen students and this year eleven. At this point, a hundred percent of them are students identified with the... And again, I'm just new to Elkhorn, but I can tell you I've already seen, you know, new programs being developed and obviously those are all developed with students needing mine to be more preventative so that you're not getting to this point.
Yeah.
Um, I'm a school psych at heart and I, I'm all about problem solving for students with behavioral challenges. So, I'm really hoping that through a collaboration, you know, these numbers are continuing to come down. Um, because, you know, they're truly interactive. It's not something that changes behavior or, or, right, is proactive by any means.
And these numbers do include our partner schools, um, as well, such as Lakeland and Ginnisley, right?
Yep. Everybody brings it up, Jason. Yeah. Yeah, you can scroll down and see Lakeland accounts for sixteen of the seclusion, twenty-one of the restraint, so almost half of. Just for consistency sake, yeah, in the future, if we can change that first one, alternative high school to the...
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Recommendations for district commensary. All right. We have a number of personnel items for this evening. Um, first, a reminder, they thank you to Yvonne Fanshaw for all of her years of service. She served as middle school social studies teacher. She did accept a job in her hometown up in Whitewater. Uh, we have the resignation of Erin Wallace, who's from the girls' women's assistant coach position. And Yvonne Fanshaw also serves as a gymnastics assistant coach in middle school. We have the transfer of Nancy Bruger, served as a teaching assistant at Tibbetts. Melitisia Malanato will be returning to roles in English language teaching assistant at high school. Uh, the appointment of Ashley Drake is a sports staff member, special ed teaching assistant at Jackson. Elizabeth Getson is a special ed teaching assistant at Tibbetts. Um, Annabelle Kokrop is a middle school teaching assistant. And Sabrina Barak is a middle school teaching assistant. We have also the appointment of Geraldine Kraus is a high school avid tutor. Christine Jernich is a high school avid tutor and Caitlin Seagerson is a high school avid tutor. I'll make a shameless plug for anyone here that we do have a special ed teaching assistant opening, uh, coming up at Jackson. That's all I have. What's that?
Custodial cooks.
Oh, there's also custodial and cook's position.
Always, no.
Questions, Mr. Trump?
Recommendation sheet for August ninth, twenty twenty-one, including employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background checking district mandated drug screening.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving in second into approve the personal recommendation sheet for August ninth, twenty twenty-one, including employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background checking district mandated drug screening. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Donald? And Mrs. Ray? We have one school gift to announce this evening. The Surgi Foundation has donated a thousand dollars um, to the school district. It's to be used, um, for the school social workers, for basically any immediate needs or anything that they see a family needs that they can pull from that account and claim. Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving second into approve the generous gift for Nicholas D. Surgi Foundation as presented. Uh, local vote, please. Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Phil Donald? Ray? Motion for announcements. All right. Uh, the only announcement, I was just trying to update you, um, from the county site where they were on the... All right. Uh, the only announcement, I was just going to update you, um, from the county site where they were on the, COVID numbers. I think the rest of the announcement pretty much covered in our prior discussion that we're continuing to update the mitigation plans from last year based on what we know now. Uh, we still will keep three feet distancing in the classrooms. Um, hand sanitation, which sounded pretty popular, and our air filtration, which I feel really, um, made a huge difference last year and why we didn't have the big impact in schools. I don't know if, um, people really, I had no idea before going into this year about air filtration, but the air in classrooms and within the school buildings gets exchanged, um, between nine to 13 times an hour. When we have it turned up high, it's close to that 13 times. So you're looking at it as less than every six minutes, all the air that was in there. So if you did have someone sick, it's getting pushed out and run through the filter. So it's not terribly efficient, but it, I think had a big impact. Let's see. So we plan on keeping that in place. It'll be similar to how we did it last year with the ability to add layers if you need, working on different, and we're also working on the different COVID protocols. So I'll share here's, um, while we're counting, I don't have, they, they discontinued the school district data um, back in June. You used to be able to go here and see it by school district. We'll check and see. I think it's something we're going to want back. I'm sorry, what?
Well, yeah.
That dashboard, yeah. But this dashboard is updated. So you can go here and check the, the cases, what they currently have, what it's looking like. The good thing is there's still, the, the positivity rate is still relatively low, but it is upticking a little bit. You can go through and explore that if you want. So we just wanted to make sure we haven't revisited that for a while, but that's, that's all I have for announcements.
Do you have a question about the air filtration? What is that? Because I know it's, do you not have like the air or like what? Do you have like an actual filter?
Let me just, yeah, just for the, well.
Cause I know last summer we couldn't have the fans on, we had windows open, but no fans. I thought like the filtration, is that what the filtration is or?
Yeah. So there's an air exchange. We pull in air from the outside.
Okay.
And, um, it goes through, you know, that goes into the rooms, you know, the air goes through and it gets filtered. And so when we're saying an air exchange, that's fresh air coming into the building. If, if there's air conditioning, it'll run through a chiller and the cooler system and then go into the classrooms and then gets pulled back out. So there's ducts there pushing the air in and pulling it out at the same time in this room. And so that's set up to exchange all the air in there.
Is that the same for like the older parts of like Tibbetts? The new parts that have air conditioning and parts that don't? Do, is that?
Yeah, there's always air exchange. Yeah. And then see, it's like, there's a code, I think the code minimum is I think it's around that six. Now, but the problem is when it's hot, the fresh air that you're pulling in from the outside is hot. And if you don't have air conditioning, it's near the positive. Because you still have to exchange it. So it almost makes it more uncomfortable than closing up and, you know, getting the cool air in the mornings and closing. That doesn't really work in a school building because you're pulling that. All right. Looking for my student. Second.
Second.
Moving to second to adjourn, no problem. Uh, for Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.